The Washington Common Council meeting August ninth, two thousand and twenty one. Can we have a moment of silence for our veterans and our COVID- nineteen victims, please? Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Councilman Lutzler.
Here.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Gress.
Here.
Councilman Hampton.
Here.
Councilman Emmons.
Here.
Councilman Dahl.
Here.
Councilman Showalter.
Here.
Okay, all present. All right, approval of minutes of the July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting in front of you. Anybody have any questions on these minutes?
I move to approve those as written.
All right, Councilman Dahl makes a motion to approve as written. Councilman Brown, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Written presentation of the claims in front of you tonight. Anybody have any questions on any of these claims?
I make a motion to approve, send them to the Board of Works.
Okay, Councilman Gress makes a motion to send these to the Board of Works for final approval. And Councilman Emmons, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, any comments by the members of the public other than what's on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, I would just wonder.
Could you state your name for us?
I'm Mary Womenor. I just want to know if you guys would consider letting us into the county ride. Are Rangers in the city? I mean, it's golf cart friendly and I think Ranger has everything a golf cart does. It's directed in the county and has seat belts and everything that... So I just, I just came to see if y'all would consider it.
I think during when we were trying to do the ordinance, we had a committee, you know, that came up to make that ordinance for the golf carts. And a lot of discussion was about those, but, and one of the concerns was how much horsepower they have more than golf carts and how much faster they can go was a big concern.
But isn't there laws that we have to go by? We get those speed limit laws and...
Yeah.
So last time I wrote this up, we looked into it and it's a state law, that they cannot be driven inside the city limits.
Oh, it's a state law?
Yeah. It's a state law.
I'm pretty sure...
I'll have to do some research on that.
Okay.
I didn't remember.
We looked that up. I think it was like six to nine months ago and that's what we were calling it.
We'll look into it again and see.
So you think it's a state?
Chief Devine will look into it and see.
We had a lot of discussion about it, too, when we finally did the ordinance.
I mean, I understand. I just...
Did Dahl, what'd you?
I was on the committee. And when we did the proposal, the state law says, golf carts, something like, that the off-road vehicles or recreational vehicles are not allowed. They're not, actually not even allowed on county roads.
Yeah, ours is allowed on county roads.
Well, I know they run them on county roads, but by state law, they're not allowed.
You buy an off-road permit, you can run them on the county roads? Yeah, it's permitted. It's...
But...
That law's changed. Just the...
Yeah, but when we did the proposal for the ordinance, they, the state only golf carts.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll have them look into it again and see if that's state law. Yeah, yeah.
I know they go faster than a golf cart, but so do motorcycles and anything else. So I mean, I think we would have to obey the...
Well, they should. Yes, okay. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for the council that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the resolutions. Reading of Resolution seven dash two thousand and twenty-one entitled, "A Resolution Appointing a New Commissioner in Indiana Municipal Power Agency."
I'll make a motion to read that resolution.
Campton makes a motion to read it. And Councilman Gress, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Resolution appointing, Resolution number seven dash two thousand and twenty-one, a resolution appointing a new commissioner to the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Whereas the City of Washington, Indiana is a member of the Indiana Municipal Power Agency, and Randy Emmons has been serving as the commissioner on the Board of Commissioners of IMPA and was appointed by this city council. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Washington, Indiana that section one said Randy Emmons tenure as a commissioner on the Board of Commissioners of IMPA is hereby terminated. Section two, Randy Ennis is hereby appointed as a commissioner on said Board of Commissioners of IMPA. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage in accordance with the law adopted this blank, they have blanked, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. Any questions on this resolution?
I'd like to make a comment that whenever I left and Randy took over, I asked you and if I could do it for a little while, just to let them get their feet set on the ground in the new position and stuff. And at the meeting, the other last meeting, he mentioned that he thinks he's ready and that's fine with me. I think he's probably ready, too, and it'll make the relation with IMPA a little easier instead of going around the long way to me to him, but, boy, it'll be a good thing.
Sorry to see Randy step down, but happy to see Randy step up. I move to approve it.
I will second that.
Okay, Councilman Dahl makes a motion to approve this. And Councilman Campton, seconds. Roll call, vote.
No, I read it.
No, okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Very good.
I'm going to abstain, but I can't since I'm kicking, I terminate myself.
Not really, no.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not debating anything from that, no.
But I appreciate you serving on this and, you know, I think Randy Ennis will do a good job. And he's been doing a lot of stuff already and things and we've got seventeen months in now, so I think...
And he knows who to call if he has a question.
Yeah, yeah, Randy's always around.
Probably on the speed dial.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, okay, ordinances. Well, we've got two ordinances tonight. We've got final reading of ordinance twelve dash two thousand and twenty-one.
Make a motion to read that ordinance by title only.
Okay, Campton makes a motion to read by title only. Councilman Showalter, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number twelve dash two thousand and twenty-one, an ordinance suggesting the cost of special meetings with the Washington Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Any questions on this ordinance?
That does have the amendment what we're voting on.
It, the amendment, you mean to include the Plan Commission?
No.
I'm having to say...
Discretion, yes, I doubt, right there at the bottom, it says discretion of the building commissioner as to their...
We didn't say something to their decision.
Yes, yeah, it's been, it's been added, yes.
Having that on there, I will make a motion to approve it.
Okay, Councilman Campton makes a motion to approve this ordinance. And Councilman Lutzler, seconds. Now we...
Councilman Lutzler.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Gress.
Aye.
Councilman Hampton.
Aye.
Councilman Emmons.
Aye.
Councilman Dahl.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Okay, this ordinance will be in effect. All right, second one, we have a final reading of ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to read that ordinance by title only.
Okay, Councilman Campton makes a motion to read by title only.
Second.
Second by Councilman Showalter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand and twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance number nine dash two thousand and twenty-one and addressing salary, position, and job title changes in the utility department.
Okay. Any questions on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance.
Okay, Councilman Campton makes a motion to approve it, and Councilman Showalter seconds it. Roll call, please.
Okay, Councilman Lutzler.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Gress.
Aye.
Councilman Emmons.
Aye.
Councilman Dahl.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Okay. All right, this ordinance will be in effect. All right, anybody in there else got any other business for the council tonight? Hearing none, seeing none. Councilman Gress, you got anything for us?
Nothing, nothing looks good out there.
Councilman Dahl?
I have nothing.
Councilman Showalter?
Nothing.
Councilman Brown?
I'm good.
Tim, you got anything for us?
I would just note, that's what I was alluding to with Councilman Campton, I'm going to go, that there's going to be another ordinance coming along, pretty much mirroring the one on the increased cost on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city plan commission. I tried to figure out a way to amend this one and add it in there and couldn't get it done in time, so there'll be another one.
Okay. Councilman Campton, you got anything?
I don't know, I need to prolong a little. Have you beat oust time yet?
No, no, I don't think, I think that's, I think that still stands.
Thanks, Doug, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Emmons?
No, I'm good.
Councilman Lutzler?
I contacted Castor today about Bedford Road again. We talked about it, I'll leave it out the other day. He said they had like five sidewalk projects left.
Yeah, four or five, yeah.
Do you think we're good to...
Well, yeah, we're going to look and see, I mean, we should, I mean, I hope to, and if we can't do it, then we'll have to go the other direction. But I've been told that they thought we can do it and save money and I ain't worried about saving the money, I just want to do the project and do it right.
Do we have to go the other route? Does it got to go all the way back to...
It just goes storm water.
Okay.
It goes storm water and they're, got a couple of projects they got to finish up, couple, but they're working on things, too, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right, Beth, you got anything for us?
I don't, thank you.
All right. Yes.
I just happened to think of something. Want to thank you for, I know the middle of the highway is going to be done, but in front of Washington Nursing Center, there's no pond there now.
It seems to be helping, yes. We tried that with, hoping it would help, and then plus, Brian's group has went up there and cleaned those storm drains and they was packed. There were several of them just packed solid and, you know.
I think it was a good thing.
Yeah, between that and taking care of the erosion there on the nursing center, I think it's, I think it's going to work. And then, so on this next plan, if it does work, we see, then we won't be probably up in those sizes on that storm water. I mean, we'll probably leave it alone. They was going to think about upping the sizes of that there on the high, on the corner, like, what's it, sixteen now, Scott?
Well, depending on which corner you don't...
On the corner, we're at seven, I mean, sixth and...
Oh, well, yeah, there's some change to be made there. There's some diffusers in there, baffles put in inside those boxes that are restrictive that according to what Ed Barnett said, you know, may not potentially have to do all the extent of the work we were going to initially do, yeah, but we'll see.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Is there any updates on the combined dispatch?
That'll come to this council sometime, it's going to have to come to council one way or another for approval or, you know, turned down. We've been, Chief Devine, myself and Beth, and we've had everybody kind of reaching in and we're trying to, you know, get all the stuff we need in there. We've added some more stuff just recently and that we've kind of forgot about, you know, longevity and stuff like that, that we really didn't think about, but Patty Boss says it needs to be in writing, and I understand that because if it's not in writing, she just can't assume to pay somebody for, and they say you're going to be grandfathered in. That's going to have to come to council next, just to council next month, and we're going to have to do some talking about it, maybe, like Alan said, we need a public hearing on it because, yeah. I mean, I was, different position, I felt that, you know, if we decide it's not, we don't like it, don't, we don't have to vote it in, but we'll bring it to council and we'll talk about it for sure. I hope the first meeting in September, we can start that, you know, where we, because they're, I mean, they keep saying, well, you know, asking where we're at, and we just keep adding things that we see that's very beneficial to the city.
We've been tweaking the language a lot.
Yes, yes.
Can we put on the agenda for the first meeting in September to have the discussion here, not necessarily, and maybe read that agreement out loud, maybe, during that meeting? And then have the next meeting, have a public, have a...
That would be what I, because I'd like to be able to take home and...
Yeah, yeah, you should. You should be able to.
And then that second meeting in September, have an actual public hearing on it, so it's out there in the record that, of what it says, and then that allow people to actually...
Actual final draft, basically.
Hopefully it...
Yeah, we've had several changes.
Lots of changes.
Yeah, we've had a lot. And, okay, yeah, we can do that.
You got a question in the audience?
Yes.
So I know you're, you're working on the contract. Shouldn't the first thing that the council does is determine whether this is even a good deal for the city? I mean, you can rework the contract all you want, but where, I mean, as I emailed some of you guys, I was involved in this for a very long period of time, and what does the city have to gain and what do we have to lose? Because from my standpoint, having been involved directly with this, there is far more for the city to lose than we have to gain at this point. So before contracts are negotiated, should we just decide whether that's the facts or not?
Well, this is what we're, we're going to talk about.
That's why at a public hearing, I want to know your actual...
I understand, Doug. I got it.
Yeah, yeah, because when you guys first, when you first presented this to me, I was against it, yet you said it'll save seconds, it'll save, so therefore I jumped, you know, and immediately you jump on board. So I want to hear the negatives.
Right, there's been a lot of things since then that has occurred, especially there's been some dispatching differences that occurred that, that time savings really isn't there any longer. So like I said, before contracts are negotiated, shouldn't there be at least a decision on whether you think this is a good idea, just based on...
I think some of that, they need to see some of that wording in the contract to decide that, too, because some of it's...
Well, I, I agree. I mean, I read the contract that you had sent me, and I do agree, there's like things in there, like, there's nothing in there about dispatching city services. And that was, that was a deal breaker from day one.
It should have been in by since you.
Oh, I didn't see that.
They added that. We had, we had to get them added, and we had to ask them more than once to add it. I mean, you know, I felt different when I was in a different position before now, and I think, I thought you kind of was feeling different back then.
Well, COVID really kind of flipped the script for me on whether this was feasible. We said from the very beginning, we, here's my point when I said the email address, the city has given in almost on everything we said from the very beginning. We conceded almost on every point we said in the very beginning, it wasn't going to be in either one of our buildings. We conceded. It wasn't going to, you know, there were certain, there was like three main principles that we said, if we can't agree on these, then the deal, we're not even going to talk deal here. Well, slowly but surely, we've conceded on a lot of these, and Alan knows as well as I do, a lot of phone calls were made, a lot of places were checked into, and the one thing they told us was, do not put it in either or, you know, either of the buildings because down the line, somebody will assume that they're in control of it. So, and during COVID, I kind of got a taste of some of that because of just something that went on, I'm not going to go into any details, but I'm just going to say that there were some things that went on during COVID, it was like, yeah, if this goes into that building, and then during COVID, we quit talking about, period. I mean, it went for like a, a year or better before, before, and didn't have a meeting on it, so I just assumed it was dead, the topic was dead.
I did, too.
Yeah, because we had discussed it.
Yeah, and it popped up.
So this guy, and then it popped back up, it reared up again, and then now it's, got to go, got to do it now. And in the contract, the way the boards are set up, are they beneficial to the city? I mean, two people from the city on the one board versus five, two versus one on the financial board, there's got to be a different way if this is, not one time in one meeting that I attend where it was ever discussed that it wasn't going to be a joint fifty-fifty venture. I'm not talking money, I'm just talking about how it's ran, how, you know, that everybody's going to have an equal voice. That's not the way it's going to work, because I sent most of you, should have got an attachment on that email, where we were, we were cut out of the E-91 Advisory Board, and we were supposed to be in that board, we were supposed to, we were supposed to have representation, and because things didn't go according to the plan, we were mixed off that board. Is that what's the future for dispatches for the City of Washington? If something isn't liked, then we will just slowly be cut out of the picture. These are just questions that I got, and I agree, just need to have public, public meetings.
Well, and I, you know, my first thing is the City of Washington, but I do, I want, I've always said this from the get-go, I want, and when you was in that position, I want the police department be okay with it, or, you know, I'm, I'm not interested, and the fire department, because they're the ones dealing with it, they're the ones working day by day, you know, with it. So I was always reaching out to you on your feelings, and I still reach out to Derek on how he feels about it.
The majority of the questions he just brought up...
We had a meeting last week, myself, Trent, Nathan, and Tony Duncan, and I addressed the majority of those, those questions, and it's the same answer, well, this is the way, you know, it's, it's got to be, you know, the sixty-five, thirty-five, and so we need sixty-five, we need, we're, we're majority of the boards, because we're putting sixty-five percent in, you guys are putting thirty-five, I mean...
When he jumped in here back, I don't know when it came up, the board, after, after a year, and they was really, you know, and I wondered why so hard all of a sudden.
And I haven't seen the financial breakdown, and one of the questions I didn't have was, I, there's sixty-five percent, are they including that two hundred and fifty thousand? That's separate, okay.
Basically, it was like one point one million, I think you were still here when we were, had that company come in, basically like one point one million, and then they were taking two hundred and fifty thousand off, so it was like nine hundred thousand was going to be the estimated cost of running the dispatch.
And then they went sixty-five, thirty-five off of that.
Exactly, there was a point in time, and I, I'm, you can... I was on board, and I even put that in my email that I sent out there, buddy, but during the course of time, seeing how things were done, I just, I honestly just don't see where the city has a bunch to gain from here. The biggest one was going to be response time, but like I said, the way that we're doing it now, our county has been being, done this way for about a year now, that, that really has been taken care of, through this, the way the dispatch is done, where it's not being relayed.
Well, my concern is, what you said as far as, that we'll eventually just be squeezed out of it. We'll eventually have to pay whatever they say we have to pay, and we will eventually have to get dispatchers back at the police station anyway.
One of the departments that we had spoke with, they were separating back out again because they had joined combined dispatch and it just didn't work out, and then they were having to split back up again.
They got new leaders.
They got new leaders.
New leaders all of a sudden, and which will happen next?
Like I said, ten years is nothing.
You know, we won't be here, but... Right, and, and I agree, everything you said is my exact concerns, that we will be, the way that it's all being done right now, the city eventually will be squeezed out, we'll have no say-so over how our officers are dispatched, or our officers are, it will be all how one organization wants it done and not how another organization wants it done. So, you know, I just knew that, talking to some people, that they were in the contract stage, it's like, oh, and that there's this big push to get this done by January first, and that could be in the building and running, and I just...
The only selling point they had was seconds.
Yeah.
You know, that, I was going to say, and without that...
I mean, like I said, the way they're dispatching now, they dispatch anyone, so they send a dispatch fire, then it gets turned over. So doing that, you're not transferring the call, and then the other department is dispatching necessary services, they're dispatching necessary services, then they're dispatching the, the officers or whatever. So that problem pretty well has been taken care of, in my opinion, I even asked the chief, I, I've been on vacation for six months, I don't know what's going on, you know, but my, my concern is that this is going to certainly impact the officers, and you have a great dispatch crew. It's, it goes back to the thing, why fix something that's not broke? If it's not setting as funny, because it, and it's not, right? It's not setting as funny. It's, it's, you know, the response time is a big one. So really, a lot of the major things that we looked at in the beginning have kind of resolved themselves over time, I mean, we're answering our own questions, I guess, so that's my two cents.
I think we need to bring it.
That's why we, I say, first meeting, we bring it to, with the, the way that the, in a local agreement is written, as written now, kind of get that out into the minutes and into the public, and then have a public hearing.
Because if we do, whatever way we go, it needs to be in this body, you know, at this setting.
But, but we need to defer quite a bit to the chiefs as far as...
Yeah, well, I agree.
There's some language that is, needs to be changed, we need to, we need to...
And, you know, no matter how I feel about it, it's up to this body to vote, I mean, I'm not a voting...
But still, we'll know your, because you were fire chief.
Yeah, and I, and I, like I said, when I started out back when, but we did that, and I would thought, you know, it's going to be something good, you know, and we've had a lot of changes. I'm worried about our dispatchers. The ones we got on hand right now, you know, I always worry about them when they move on, I mean, if they moved over there. We want them to be, we want to take care of them, I mean, you know, we want to make sure they're getting what they deserve.
I have a concern. Okay, I have to have the budget here by November first, because I have to give everything back, at least a month, probably, you know, and have a...
Well, but I think we left the budget as if we were having a dispatch, right?
We did it both ways.
Yeah, I think...
But permissionally and non...
That we have to get through also, and that takes two readings.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I think that we can change that afterwards, you know, I think we do it as, I think we do the budget and do it on schedule as if we're having a dispatch next year.
As if we are having a dispatch.
In my opinion. And then we change it.
If we don't, it'll go the other way, yeah.
You say it would be, because I'm thinking, why, why are we worried about their time restraints?
Yeah, no, no. No, we're talking about our restraint.
Yeah, well, I know, but we're restraining our, our time restraints based on we need, we need this...
I mean, in my opinion, we move forward the budget as if we're having a dispatch.
Because Beth was getting ready for that in September.
That way that they're in the salary ordinance and all that stuff, and then we just, if we decide by the time January one comes around, then we'll just have to do the necessary amendments then.
I think it'd be easier to do it then.
If the language is not what we want, I wouldn't bring it up to the meeting. I wouldn't either.
Well, I think, yeah, they were making more changes on it, so, yeah.
But if they don't make the changes, don't even bring it up to the meeting. Just tell them that. Because there's no sense addressing it if it doesn't, if it's not what we want.
Yeah. And I want the, you know, this body to...
I didn't get the email, Darren just shared it with me. I didn't.
Well, oh, that email, well, he changed, he changed, you probably didn't know, you probably didn't know about the change.
Different email.
And Kenny changed. Yeah, they both changed, Kenny and Randy changed.
I was just checking the mic share.
Yeah, you probably, that's probably why. Yeah, but, you know, I still, if you got, if we turn down, you know, that's fine, but I want this body to, you know, decide that. Okay. Anything else over this, or anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing none. This means adjourned. Board of Public Works and Safety in five minutes. Board of Public Works and Safety in five minutes. All right, this call is meeting order, City of Washington Board of Public Works and Safety meeting, August ninth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, approval of the minutes from the July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting in front of you. Councilman Donald makes a motion to approve as written.
A second.
And need a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a discussion of approval, pay application for Business Fifty West, uh, pay application number thirteen, is the first one, for three fifty-three forty-four.
How many will you approve that?
Okay, kinda need to make a motion to approve it.
I second my, I just have a question that.
Okay.
Are we really gonna be billed for a dollar and fifty-six cents if it's left over?
Well, I, I usually, I have conversation with Richard on this, he, uh, and, well, this is V S's here. Um, I don't know. And then on another one, it's four sixty-one, you know, it's four sixty-one on the other one.
It should be the last one.
It should be, and I don't know, yeah, including retainage, yeah. I, uh, I didn't notice that. Hmm, I don't, we can ask. I'm not sure why it's like that, that don't, you know, it really don't make sense, but.
It's a rounded error, probably.
Yeah, if it was, that would make that three fifty-five even. But we can, um, we can ask, but if not, then we can, so we.
Yeah, I, I second it.
Okay, Councilman Donald, a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, yeah, and same thing, um, the next one's, um, pay application number twelve to Don Gress Construction on the sewer side for five forty.
I move to approve that.
Okay, Councilman Donald makes a motion to approve it, need a second, so all in favor, say aye, opposed? All right, then, uh, we got, um, well, we had a lady call in from, a discussion approval request from Susan Morphon, uh, fourteen oh-one Grove Street for a sign to be placed in the neighborhood to help slow traffic for her autistic child and other children playing in the area, and I, when I got, we got this request over the phone, and I reached out to Brian, and I believe, Brian, you, you looked at it, and, um, but we've been trying to contact her, she, I don't believe anybody's here tonight for, for this. We tried to contact her and haven't had any luck getting ahold of her to see if she comes, and, and Brian, the only thing, I think he approved it, but he was, like, anything else, we, we, didn't you say you was okay with it? And he said if they would move, you know, if we do this, but I think we should table it and try to get ahold of them before, you know, and then bring it back, I told Debbie, just leave it on the agenda, she was talking about taking it off, and I said, let's just leave it. I, and, uh, let's see about table on it, and then get ahold of them, um, we haven't had no contact, I was, I'm pretty sure she still wants it, but, uh, they, yeah, I'd rather make contact first, and, and then bringing it back to the next meeting if, if that.
That's my opinion.
Okay, all right, that's what we do, thanks. Huh?
Skip to claims.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, but discussion approval of claims that was submitted tonight in front of, from the city council.
I'll maybe approve the claims.
Okay, and you make a motion to approve the claims, and David seconded, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Um, discussion approval agreement with Ross Brothers Disposal and Recycling. And I, we asked Scott a question a while ago, I wasn't sure what it was for, you know, when I seen it come through, and Scott explained to you, you know, for that one screen.
For the primary screen at our plant facility.
Yeah.
We do have the other screen at our C S O tank, that's, that's a bigger, that's a twenty-yard offer there, that's, that's, uh, provided by Development Trucks.
Where do these guys take it?
Uh, that will go to Davis Canland Field, they're out of Petersburg, the main company's out of Brazil. Uh, Ryan Klingel was his first party, he's been since bought out by Wallace. They still were willing to do that, that, uh, there again, we remember back, we used to have Republic do that, and they just cold turkey shut us off, and we was paying right just under three hundred dollars a month for them to do it, they're, and you can see what they're wanting, eighty dollars a month, so, pretty good deal.
And when they worked, we had to work out some details, and Scott and Beth has the details worked out, where the time, when we got the bills, it was first, it was like, you know, one is a lot, ten days?
They were willing for it to give us ten days to pay it, and when they billed us, we couldn't do that because.
This doesn't work out enough.
I mean, you know, we talked about some of this other stuff out there, and Republic wasn't getting it, they don't do.
Pretty much, for whatever reason, they, they claim that their truck, the way their truck designed, they, they don't, they're not very good at holding any leaky material. They leak out on the ground, of course, they can't do that, so.
This might fit.
That was the reasoning why they shut us off.
Oh, what about Wallace, they don't, they won't do.
No, they, their, their trucks are different, they use rear-loading trucks still, the, the Republic went to side loaders.
Okay.
And they're not as sealed up as good as a rear-loading truck is, so.
And then one other question, uh, Councilman Brown was just asking, he had to go do something else, but do we know of any other source that would take our sludge besides, I mean.
As far as our bio-solids sludge?
Yeah, what we take from land.
Yeah, they, well, I assumed, my assumption was that Development Indiana down at Development Landfield would take it. They sense they're just strictly household now, will not take it. The closest allocation we have now, if we have to haul it to an Auburn site, it's going to be south of Winslow, Indiana there.
But it, but we did, we checked the prices.
Yeah, the, uh, the price now has increased for them too, so.
Yeah.
Amazing why the county is the same way, so the county had already called, the, the price to haul per ton down to their facility down at south of Winslow is right at, I, I can't remember, I think he told me just, just, just under twenty bucks a ton, so. So, you know, the reason, the reasoning why, that's why Davis Canland Field decided to raise their price to that high, because I can't get it hauled away to landfill any cheaper than that.
Right.
Certainly investigate land applications, but.
Well, you know.
It's cheap either, so.
Yeah, and then he was, and that, that was the question he had, and he was gonna ask, if the, if you said yes, there is someone, then he was gonna say how much, and he just wanted to make sure someone, that fifteen dollars was a, a good price.
Yeah.
It, it's a lot higher than what we used to, but they said they gave the city, you know, and there was other things, they haven't been increased for many years, so that's how they got to fifteen.
But, you know, and certainly, you know, ru, last time we land applied, it's probably been twelve years ago now. Uh, we can certainly investigate that, we, we do carry a hybrid mint, we kept, I always kept a mint active. Uh, I still haven't got numbers back on that yet, I am still investigating that part. The, uh, sludge hauling is pretty much set in stone as far as pricing goes, but I have, do that, the problem we have that is is getting landowners that would be willing to accept our sludge. And so I haven't went through that process, I'm first trying to get pricing, who would do it? And, and we used to have Willing Brothers out of Fowler, Indiana do it before, and then R C S over here at Legault, the R C S is out of business now. Or at least they've changed names, and I've been able, unable to get ahold of anybody that does that, uh, so, and so I'm still working out those numbers yet, but I haven't got a good answer for you guys.
Okay, okay. Okay, it was, so, any other questions? Okay, prove this, prove this.
My second.
Okay, David, Councilman Donald makes a motion to approve this contract, and need a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got discussion of approval of three salary position changes, we've got two in the utility department. Motion to redid?
I'll make a motion to review.
All right, I'll second it, need to make, go ahead, Tim.
All right, um, Stacy Anderson's requesting a following salary change for Timothy Emmons, uh, from customer service technician at twenty dollars and twenty-four cents per hour to billing key account specialist at the same rate, effective date would be August seventh of two thousand twenty-one. And also Stacy requests a following salary change of Derek Rhodes from field service technician at twenty dollars and twenty-four cents an hour, uh, to customer service technician, again, at the same rate, effective date would be August seventh of two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. All right, I'll second those, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we got one on the, on the water side, that, Tim?
Correct, uh, James Lloyd from the Water Department requests a following salary change of Robert Overton, uh, title of distribution maintenance for water at twenty dollars and thirty-five cents per hour to field service technician for utilities at twenty dollars and twenty-four cents per hour, also effective on August seven, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve that one too.
All right, need to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Councilman Donald, second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this was all because Wanda retiring, and it opened up some spots. Uh, we're working on that.
The eleven cent drop in salary, not a problem?
No, he thinks, uh, doing what he's doing in the long run, he said it's, uh, I asked him about that, and he said everything. And we're working on the other ones, you know, we got some, some things coming here for water here shortly, and. No, just those three. Well, you got another one?
I've got four here.
Oh, I, I just had three in front of me here, I just had the three.
That's all I had else.
Yeah.
Here's a, Tony, was it Tony Orinder?
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't have that, okay.
I don't have it either.
Yeah.
We're shortchanged here.
Yeah, okay, we got one more on the Water Department's side.
All right, also from James Lloyd, a request of following salary changes, Anthony Orinder from distribution maintenance at twenty dollars and thirty-five cents per hour to job foreman at twenty dollars and sixty-one cents per hour, also effective on August seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, any questions on this? This is where we gotta leave, and opened up a spot for this, uh, job foreman title, and, uh, so me and, uh, Jim talked, and we moved Anthony, Tony into this.
I move to approve it.
Okay, Councilman Donald makes a motion to approve it, and need a second, so all in favor, say aye. Opposed, okay, anybody in the audience got anything for the Board of Works tonight?
Well, I, I don't know if this is for us or for the city council, but, um, I'd like to look into the possibility of the, um, utility department having their own I T person. Is that a city council or is that a Board of Works?
That'd be, it would, it had to be a salary ordinance change, for one thing.
Well, just because we have to change the software this year, there's gonna have to be somebody there, just there, and nowhere else, and not be called out, because it's a very big deal.
You know, and we, we brought this up recently, I mean, with the topic came.
Talk about it if it's calorie.
And, uh, I have no problem with it, the only thing, you know, I, my only concern would be, you know, you got our regular I T, and then you got this other I T, would there, you know, conflict there? I mean, would, would say, I mean, you know, you know, that's all I'm thinking, I'm just thinking out loud, and.
The conflict now is, the one that we have is never available for the utilities, and.
Yeah.
They're like the most important, uh.
Yeah.
Software in the city, other than the clerk, you know?
Seems like it should be somebody that would work under the I T chief, you know?
But just be dedicated, dedicated.
Yeah, dedicated to that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Whoever can look into it, I mean, we have to, you know, that just.
That way you keep everything coordinated anyway, yeah.
That's time is of the essence, like Beth said, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Although utilities would pay for it, so it necessarily would not have to be in the.
Yeah, they're on the other side.
Right, it would just be on the, it would just be the salary modification.
Change, yes, yes.
Now would be the time to do it, because we're doing the salary order.
But, you know, I guess we, Stacy, I guess we would, uh, I mean, I don't know, who, who would look out there and try to find that person?
Yeah, we, you know, we pay for half of the salary, and we get about ten percent of our time.
But, you know, somebody who was gonna take the lead and, and to find that other IT person.
I mean, I think probably that would be between you and.
I mean, we can, but, you know, I mean.
Utility.
And I might, let me talk and talk to, when we hired Michael, Councilman Brown was involved with that, and Joe. Let me, uh, talk to him, I mean, he does, that's why he does.
I saw someone on the interview.
Yeah, okay.
No, I went, was I, yes, I went.
But that's what he does for his, his company, so, I mean, he has a lot of, um.
Alan would be a good person to talk to.
Yeah, let me talk to him.
We need to get on that, because that's gonna be here before we know it.
That would free up time for them to be for other.
But I think that's best, Tim, like Tim said, that's, work under the current one.
Sure.
Because that way, I, otherwise, I think.
Problems with equipment and that kind of stuff.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But they just need a body there all the time.
I know, and I know it's been a problem, and then he's got, you know, and he's also got, you know, nothing gives him, he's got some health issues, and that takes away time from the city. And, uh, Drew is just, uh, he's coming along, but he's, you know, work in progress, and he's doing good.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to bring that up.
All right, I'll get ahold of Alan, we'll talk about, and see what we can. Okay, anything else for the Board of Works? All right, hearing none, seeing none, now I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned.
We need to sign that.